So it's, uh, sorry, we're running a little behind schedule. It's about almost six ten on Thursday, uh, January fifth. Happy New Year, everyone. Um, we've been having a little bit of technical difficulties, but I think we're all rolling now. So, um, first, so I'm gonna call the regular meeting order. First thing is set, adjust agenda. I believe we have one item to strike from the agenda.
Yep, strike item three.
Strike item three.
And move the others up.
Yep, and then others roll in that same order. Anything else? Anybody have any, um, anything to add or subtract?
I could motion to remove item three.
Great.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communication from the audience. Anybody here to discuss something that's not on the agenda? Great.
Yes.
I'm here in support of Earth. I tried to remind her that they have to be on the agenda.
I just wanted to-
Okay, can you guys state your names?
Yeah, so I'm Serena Castile. Um, I am a resident of Walden, but Harwick is my town. I've been in the area twenty-two years. I have many, many connections to the town. And I recently purchased an electric vehicle. And I just wanna talk about how difficult it is to get it charged in Harwick. There are currently three places to charge. One of them is behind the health center. That is not available to the public during the day that I know, because I tried to use it recently when I, when I had an appointment there. There's one behind the, that's a level two kind of slow charger. There's one behind the, the, um, dentist office, which has so far been available. There's only one charger there, but I haven't had any trouble using it when it comes, not a fast charger, but it, it's very reasonably priced. They charge, they don't charge you for the electricity. They charge you a dollar an hour. And then we have one fast charger, and that is the one behind the Loyola Ford. And that one charges ten times the amount of a fast charge that I have had in, um, Stowe, where I go to church. So ten times. It is, it is like buying gasoline. Electric vehicles are very expensive. One of the reasons people, it's sacrificial for me to buy one, and I'm doing it because I love Mother Earth. But it's, it's, uh, I don't, I can't afford to pay my payments and also pay the same amount in electricity as I pay for gas. And unfortunately, I'm off the grid. I have solar power, and this time of year, I can't charge at home. You know, there, I know that there are other people in the area that come to Harwick and they need a charger. And I think it's a real problem. I've talked some to Opie about it, and he's told me about all the reasons why it can't be in a lot of places. And I would just like for you guys to have a can-do attitude about figuring out where it can happen, as opposed to all the reasons that it can't happen in a variety of places. Because I think it's, it's really, really important. It's important for the environment, and it's important for the current people of the area who very much support this town. So that's my request for you, is that you really work on getting charging stations. And I also encourage you not to let whoever is doing it behind the Lloyd Ford do any more, because their gouging is reprehensible. Utterly reprehensible.
Yeah, so we don't have anything to do with that. We actually don't have anything to do with any of the charging stations you mentioned.
I'm trying, what about the permitting from the, to operate a business? I mean, that is a business, obviously.
Yes.
I mean, there's, there's red Z's all over town for ordinance. I mean, don't, don't businesses have to be, you know?
They have to meet our zoning requirements, yeah.
Oh, it's a zoning?
That's the Z is for zoning, yep. A zoning permit. Um, so, so-
Be clear, what's, what's the complaint here?
So-
Right, so all I'm asking is-
Yeah, so just be aware.
We really try hard to try to get more, I know there's federal money there for it.
Yep, so we hear you, I think. Um, I don't, uh, you know, I'd-
I don't need an answer today.
You can, yeah, go ahead.
Serena, just a really quick comment. So we, we get a regular update from Harwick Electric, and this is a regular, um, conversation that we're constantly asking about, because I think anything that we would do would have to be in partnership, essentially, with Harwick Electric. And they are working on a station right behind their facility.
Harwick Electric, yeah.
And then we've also, it's definitely always a part of our conversation. We also had a conversation with the state at one point that was looking at Harwick to set up, um, some EV stations. The state is not always the fastest. Um, I think the trick that you're experiencing, that a lot of people are experiencing, is that there are more and more electric vehicles. As the Loyola Ford shows, there are all those lightnings right out front. But we just don't have the infrastructure. But we are working on it slowly but surely. So thank you for reminding us that we need to continue to work at it.
Yep, there we go.
That's all.
All right, thanks.
Um, I, I'm Nancy Kellogg, and I recently had my son from Boston, who has an all-electric car, came up to visit, to meet Pete, you know, and also visit his mother-in-law in, um, Stowe. And anyway, they were frantic about the, the, um, the car running out of juice and water, you know. I said, oh, there's, there's chargers all over. At that time, I didn't realize there are fast chargers and slow chargers. And, um, I can't imagine a, a business like the Loyola County Ford operating a business without oversight as to what kind of business and blah, 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 you know, they can actually operate in town. I'm surprised.
Mr. Upson.
Can I see something? So, one of the things with the, the fast chargers, okay, is demand fees. So when, it's like turning on a hundred air conditioners.
Oh, the demand, so-
Demand fees, high demand of electricity.
Really?
So that is the reason why it's so expensive to charge a vehicle, because we're a municipally-owned utility. We're not Green Mountain Power. We're not Delco. So we can't, one of the things, and I can't speak for the commissioners right now. You should go to a commissioner's meeting and discuss this with them.
The Harwick Electric Board of Commissioners.
The Harwick Electric Board of Commissioners. But the demand fees are what drives the price of a, of a fast charge up.
It's definitely one thing.
And that's one of, one of the-
See, electricity's not free.
No.
And, and some of, the, I think that the sentiment is with the commissioners, they, they don't feel that the public should subsidize people with electric vehicles to charge their vehicle, a fast charge of their vehicle. I, I know that has been an argument.
But, but they need to subsidize people with gas engine vehicles that are, you know-
How are they subsidized?
I, I don't think-
How are they subsidized?
At five something a gallon.
With a pollution, with the vehicle-
We're gonna have a big argument here in a minute.
Okay, so I think that-
It's all connected.
Yeah, so I think that we, by and large, realize that over time, Harwick to be, um, continue to be alluring to visitors needs to provide charging in the same way that we provide, that there are gas stations in town.
We don't provide gas stations.
Well, right, but in the town, there should be gas stations.
And, but the town, but the town, we should go, we should, we should nip this one.
We can be supportive.
We should nip this one.
But I don't think we're gonna be in the business of delivering-
No, we're not gonna be in the business of providing electric charging stations. That's right, just like we don't provide gas stations.
But-
But they got charging at the Loyola Ford.
They do.
But they charge for it, they charge money for it, they charge money for it. Shame on them.
This is a different location, this is the, the Harwick.
Yep, so-
And that's owned by the Loyola County Ford.
Doesn't matter who owns it, they own it, it's their electricity. If you want it, you charge your rig there, you pay what they're asking. No different, but it's no different than when I drive into any, that's why we have it.
Twenty acres of PB panels up the road here, um, twenty acres.
Oh, Kenny Davis's?
Yeah, not, more than twenty acres.
Anyway, yeah.
I think, I think this would be a really good thing to bring to Harwick Electric.
Yes, I do too, I do agree with that.
The perfect place to have the conversation.
They need to hear stuff like this.
They really need to hear-
Where's the transition to the whole-
They meet on Mondays.
Off the fuel, uh, speed car area.
We don't know.
That's a huge question.
That's not something we're gonna answer tonight, I don't think.
And so when do they meet?
I'm looking it up right now.
They, they meet-
Third, third, third Monday of the month. It's on their website.
Is it on the website now?
Yeah, yep.
Really?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Do they welcome input?
I believe it's the third, the third Monday of the month.
Kayla's looking it up.
I'll just double check, I'm pretty sure it is.
Over across the road, yep. All right, I'm gonna move us along.
Yeah, I need a question.
Yes, third Monday, the third Monday at five P M.
At what time?
Five, yeah.
They start early.
And look on their website too, because they had been meeting by Zoom, right?
Yeah, there's a link.
So they're busy, yeah. Um, all right, so next, next is to select board to approve minutes from last time, which is December the fifteenth. If you have a motion to that, though.
I can motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Any, uh, discussion about the minutes from last time? If they look good? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the town manager report.
I'm gonna pull through this so we can get that.
All right.
So both, both collective bargaining union contracts are under final review by both sides, um, and should be, will be ready to ratify by the next meeting. Uh, SE group provided us with a bridge summary report in the final hours.
Yeah.
Yep.
Very nice.
Yep. Which has been passed on to our consultant working on the section one oh six report. It's a historical review. We had a good meeting with him today, so the ball is rolling.
Nice.
Uh, it was just a minute after we got the thing. It went right over there. Nice, uh, one oh six associate. We are moving forward with the lead service inventory. Do you guys, are you familiar with the lead service inventory?
Do tell.
Okay, so the state of Ramon is requiring by October of 2024 that all connections that the town water system has are inventoried. The type of, um, material that we, we connected.
That we connect to?
That we connect to the, where the meter goes. So we have a lot of this information.
So, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, like-
Them to ask or from where we end?
From when we leave our distribution line and go up there.
So sort of at our shut-off at the street?
Yep.
To the meter.
What's the, to the, to the meter in the house?
Yep.
What, what's that material?
Yes.
Even though often that's not as well by us.
I know, but they're required.
You're right, I understand.
But we're being required to inventory that.
Just trying to understand.
How, how do we know what that is without digging it up?
Okay, both hands.
We have, well, what's, what's good about this?
No, you're right.
Is the meter project limited?
Yes. Yes, so we did a meter project where we took pictures every year.
Really?
So a lot of this work is gonna be done. Some towns have to actually go to every single house and document.
But all you know really is what's coming up.
That's okay, that's step one.
Okay.
That's just step one. Yep, that's due by October 2024, so we have some time. We're starting to work on it now. The next step is to actually dig up lines and take samples and check.
Now, is this the lines off the main or off the house service?
That we, that we're not sure of.
Right.
So if we have a question, they're gonna require us to dig it up and check it and test it.
Wow, talk about-
We're doing, or contracting out.
Um, right now, I think we have a lot of the information already. So it's just gonna be some compiling, some information.
But you know what I'm saying, when it comes time when we sit there and dig it, it'll be better to have a, no, because the contract's a break there, no.
I, I had two questions at the same time. So, East Hurry Fire District, great question. There are small enough water systems where the state is helping out with all of that.
Oh, good.
So we are just over the threshold of size.
Where we do it ourselves.
Where we do it ourselves. But luckily, we have a lot of this data.
Yep.
So we're working on it. Just wanted you to know that it's a requirement. Um, and there's, there's grants out there to be able to do it, but we already got an asset management grant, I think in 2016 or 2012, where, um, a lot of this information was collected when we did our mapping.
Yep.
So we're, we have a leg up.
Well, yes, so we doing this, but I'm feeling like we're gonna discover some lead in this process.
That's the, that's the reason for doing it, but I don't think you're-
I haven't seen one in a long time.
Really? So that's good news, I mean, I don't know that, but I mean, that's the idea of what-
Or they used to do with the old lead poos necks coming off from the maintenance cell.
Yep.
But I haven't seen one of those in years.
That's good.
And a lot of people, you know, I think-
And that water's tested anyway, so.
West Church, it's a tachyser.
But not everybody's had it.
No, I don't know.
No, and that's what we're talking about.
But we got a lot of your water, I mean, you know, everything that runs up, you know, church, West Church, you know, part of North Main, McMillan, uh, South Main, Calogh Street.
So when you made those connections, did we-
We did it all in the dark.
Yeah, and they got, they got rid of lead-free solder, not that we're doing a lot of soldering in houses. They're putting some soldering, so just wanted to fill you in on that.
Okay.
Sounds like a great project.
Yeah, another great payday.
But, but the money we spent on putting those meters in is saving us money.
Well, we also got an asset management grant where we inventorying a lot of this stuff. So we're, we're in good shape. And I talked to Homer and Elliot, uh, Monday or Tuesday, Tuesday, and, uh, we discovered all this and kind of breathed a sigh of relief.
Yeah.
Um, wastewater plant upgrade, so we'll move from water to wastewater. The wastewater plant upgrade project is winding down for the season. Uh, the contract will stop and we'll, the contract will stop this Friday. Um, they're gonna do a little bit of demobilization next Monday, and then we will resume in the spring. Lagoon one, or lagoon number two has been filled, and three strands of aeration are fully operational. And today, they moved the curtain, um, back from lagoon one to lagoon two. So that's in place. They repaired a small rip, um, so that's good. And everything's, is going well. Uh, I think the operator did monthly testing, so they, we had the results. Couple high phosphoruses, um, and a B O D throughout the, um, the project of the lagoon two dewatering, but we're, we're in good shape there. Um, the wastewater plant discharge permit has been submitted to the state for renewal. Um, our current permit runs out in July of 2023, so we sent out letters to the property owners and submitted the paperwork by the deadline of December thirty-first. Uh, we were, um, oh yeah, we were, this is, uh, we were given a heads-up by the assessor that we received a letter from the state where the common level of appraisal, um, is at seventy-eight point four. We fell below eighty percent, which we knew was coming. Um, we have an RFP out, and we're, what's the deadline for, um?
Two, three, couple weeks.
Yeah, so we're, we'll have a, um-
Responses to the-
We'll have responses and we'll get that ball rolling for a town-wide reappraisal.
Opie, just so, if folks don't understand, do you mind just explaining what the threshold? Or somebody doesn't-
I wish Matt was here. So basically, um, the prop, our grand list has to be with a, a certain threshold of the common level of appraisal rate. And when we fall below eighty, um-
It means your properties are under assessed.
Yeah, we're not collecting enough.
Ideally, your C L A would always be a hundred, but that's never gonna happen. Your stuff, when you do a reappraisal, it usually ends up being like a hundred and five, a hundred and seven. So it gives you a little bit of time to, to wear it down. Um, but because houses have been selling for high, that's why we reappraisal, so.
But everybody wants a piece of Harwick right now, and Walden, and Walden. Yeah. Um, so that's where we're at. This is just the tip of the iceberg.
Best day of the job.
Thanks.
But the reappraisal can also help us with having more accuracy in the grand list.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, this, this real, a lot, I think a lot of towns are gonna be in this.
And he told us we need to do this a few months ago.
Yeah.
We're good.
I thought they, yeah.
It was part of the process.
Yep, and our last reappraisal was 2016, I think, right?
Right.
That sounds like-
It's supposed to be every ten years or something, isn't it?
I think it's every time you dip below eighty percent of the C L A, which the time before was 2006, so it was ten years. But this time is gonna be-
Probably around twenty-five before we can even get into-
It's gonna be ten years again, because every town is looking for these services, and there aren't that many appraisers.
Appraisers. Lucky, luckily, we have a good relationship with one.
Yes.
And hopefully, we, we receive a bid from them.
Yeah. Awesome, all right, thank you.
Does a town employ appraisers?
Uh, we, we, we employ an assessor.
Assessors.
We do have an assessor.
Appraisers and appraisers are the same thing? No, no?
Uh, similar, but, so we employ, employ an assessor to do the job the listers used to do. So not to do, it's not part of his regular job to do a town-wide reappraisal. So that's why we're going out to bid for them.
It's an extra service.
Yes, another, it's a whole project.
Contract.
What happened to the listers?
Um, wow, so-
Nobody applied.
Nobody applied, they want, the existing listers wanted to retire. This is going back a ways.
Yeah, I remember seeing there's a, and a charter change.
And a charter change, yeah. So we don't, yeah, we didn't have anybody who wanted to do it anymore. So, uh, next up is the road foreman report. Tom, tell us about mud season, Tom.
We don't really have one.
We don't have mud season?
No, a couple of potholes here and there. A lot of probably less than a thunder, go ahead, we'll fix today. All in all, they're not, don't get into that bad. Come next week, if-
They're better than a lot of roads, and a lot of other towns are better than that.
The weather forecast is going live. We plan on, uh, hopefully Monday and Tuesday, I think Wednesday. My thunder, we're supposed to get a little rain show or something. But Monday and Tuesday will be hollow and gravel, so we can button up some of the potholes and stuff.
Hollow and gravel.
Second week of January, that's crazy.
May they wear the sun chap.
Yeah, even if you ran a little bit, maybe you should pack it on a little bit. A little bit's worth it.
All right, so, that's, all right, and all the trucks, are the trucks running?
No.
Oh.
Don't know.
Don't.
We have, uh-
It was a night garage estate down in Florida where I had a chance. It seemed like, uh, when I got back, everything was broke. Let's see, my truck, you had five fifty, that's been down for what now, three weeks? Four, something like that.
Three.
Uh, when we had the windstorm and got the snow, Todd's truck was down, so we were down to three trucks. Uh, so we basically filed till, I think it was ten o'clock at night, and then we came in, I think one thirty the next morning, started again, just so we could try to, try to open everything up. Then let's see, my truck had an oil leak, we got that fixed. Then I had a valve that was leaking, we got that fixed. Cool cat, that had a valve leaking, we got that repaired. Snow blower blew a seal on the front, we got that fixed. Let's see, so Todd's truck was fixed, and that.
The five fifty should be done tomorrow.
Yeah, the heat tank.
Yep.
But anyways, well, that's all, we got that.
Well, thank goodness, it's not snowing this morning.
Yeah. Yikes.
Or really, it had bad ice.
Couple sore issues.
Yeah.
Pump valve issue with a blunt something, uh, we got that fixed.
That's water, not sewer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, next, all right.
Fire truck, I don't know if we filled them in on that, or-
They know.
Okay.
Yeah. Major trauma to the fire truck.
Yep.
Yeah, that we're not gonna do anything with.
Yep, it's a good plan.
We won.
You guys will figure that out amongst yourselves.
I wrestle for it.
It's an item of contention, right?
All right.
Well, let's move on.
Okay.
We're gonna pick that scad.
Okay, so we're gonna move on, thank you, Tom. Uh, next up is Harwick Police Report, and we have Mike Benry on the, on the Zoom. And you can hear us now, right?
Woo-hoo! What's that? I can hear you loud and clear now.
Awesome.
Loud and clear. So I'll keep it short and sweet. Um, I think the big thing for us is we had the cops grant audit review. Uh, Case, can you hear me fine?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Casey and I had the cops grant, uh, audit review on the twenty-ninth. We, we got through that. Uh, I think we got everything that we need. Uh, Casey did a great job with that, I really appreciate her help with that. Um, so I think, uh, the next thing is just the, uh, leaving the scene of the crashes that we've had. I think I told you in the past, we've been having a lot of those, so we've really stepped up the DUI enforcement. Uh, and Officer Andrew Force has been heading that up, getting a lot of DUIs off the roadway, uh, recently. So I'm pretty ecstatic with that. Um, we're gonna be doing snowmobile patrols when we get snow. So I'm not sure when that's gonna be. Do you know, Danny, have any idea when the snow's coming?
No, I've, I've groomed all the snow we had right off the trail, so I- if you haven't noticed, I've been grooming Walker Street here lately, so doing what I can.
So we've got, uh, two sleds that will be coming from, uh, the-
Buffalo Mountain.
Buffalo, Buffalo Mountain, yep. And, uh, we're gonna be storing those up at the town garage. So, uh, I think we're gonna be all settled with that. I don't think we're gonna be getting a trailer. Uh, once we get snow, we'll just ride them up there, and that's where they'll be. But, uh, that way we can do the enforcement on mainly the rail trail. That seems to be everybody's concern, is keeping the speed down on the rail trail. Uh, we have, uh, speed guns and that type of stuff that we can, uh, do in town. Uh, and we have training set up for the guys on the eighteenth to, uh, for the snowmobile patrol. Other than that, I, everything is running pretty smoothly at the police department. I don't know if there's anything else anybody has to offer at this point.
Uh, I don't.
No.
Thank, thank you.
Good job, keep up the good work.
All right.
Great. Uh, all right, so I'm gonna move us on. Next is item one, select board to discuss new developments and potential sale of property we acquired to be a tax collector's deed on Caspian Avenue.
The road schedule.
Yeah, Mr. Upson, do you wanna?
Sorry, I was just telling Mike he doesn't have to stay.
Yeah.
Um, so I got a, I put an email in here.
Yeah.
Uh, that I got an email from Christina Meckelson saying that she's having a hard time insuring the deed to this property and suggested that we sell the property for what the town owes, which is, where's that email?
So I, I read that, and I don't understand. It just makes no sense to me that the dollar amount changes anything.
Yeah, how does that clear the title?
I don't see why we would sell something that we can't title for less money. Either you, either you title it or you don't, you know what I'm saying? It's like, I don't understand why, what that gets us out of.
How does that affect the, being able to clear the title?
Right, clear title's clear title.
And we need the amount we need.
Has nothing to do with the amount of money that's paid for a parcel.
It goes back to the original deed.
I'm, I'm still, I'm still at, I'm still at loss why-
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't fix any title problems. Well, I don't think that she's saying that she, well, so I believe-
Well, I read it, so I got my opinion what it says.
Yeah, but I believe what she's saying. So she's doing the title search for the buyer, and she's saying, I don't think I can certify clear-
She's saying we don't have clear title to the thing to sell.
No, she's not, she's saying that she can't make sure of the title.
She's saying, I don't think I can certify clear title to the buyer. It's a slightly different nuance. She's not actual, she's not our lawyer saying you guys don't know.
I understand, I understand, I understand what's going on.
So what they're saying is if, if somebody goes to the bank and takes out a loan for that property?
Right.
They're not gonna get a loan, which you can't.
Dean, can you, can you say your name, please? Sorry, since you're doing-
Uh, Dean Percier.
Thank you.
I understand that.
The person who's-
The buyer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, I understand that.
Right.
I mean, basically, my, my, what I plan on doing is clean up the property and keep it, because my property connects to it.
Yeah.
Um, and like I said again, we, we've put up with this for years and years and years. And we're the ones that had to suffer with the mess over there, and that's why we wanna purchase it clean up. And I wanna make sure that nobody else can do the same thing that we've had to go through, because the laws protect people and allow them to do-
The laws protect people, Dean, to have clear title. The laws do not protect people that do not have clear title.
What I'm saying is, the law protects people who trashed their property and it depreciates my property, and I have to look at it. And then when I go up to the town and say, hey, there's garbage out there, there's food laying all over the place, thrown all over the place, there's bags of garbage.
I understand, it's not the end, it's not the end of the place, it occurs in town, so.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but years and years of, I mean, I, I think if it was next door to your house, you might feel a little bit different about it.
If it was next door to my house, I would pay what the original amount was of the deal.
Oh, really, okay.
I don't understand.
Well, the lawyers are the ones saying this. I didn't, I'm not the one that suggested this, the lawyer's the one that suggested this, because she felt the property wasn't worth what you're asking for.
Well, that's not her position. You should get into attorney, because it doesn't change the title to that property.
She is, she is our attorney.
All right, that's fine, but I'm telling you, clear title's clear title. And if we don't have clear title, we shouldn't be selling it. That's my opinion. And if certainly it shouldn't be meant to be sold.
So what are you gonna do with the property, just leave it there?
Well, we're gonna figure out the title, I guess, right?
It's gonna cost you money.
Nobody's worked on, well, it doesn't, I still am not, I don't understand. Nobody's worked on, well, it doesn't, I still am not, I don't understand why.
Still changing the price doesn't resolve the title clearance.
Change is not.
And being able to get insurance on it, it doesn't change that, so.
So I think what we're trying, correct with the wrong, but what you're trying to say is not that we don't wanna sell the property, but, but that we need to make sure that there's a clean title, so that way we do it properly. So, we just need to figure out how we clean the title up, because we own it right now. So, that's on us, that's on us to figure out how to get that clean title, and, right, I mean, no, since it's our property?
Do you wanna spend that kind of money, I mean?
Well, it's a choice.
I don't know what it costs, that thing, but she, according to her, it's gonna cost some money to have it taken care of.
I don't even know what the title defects are, so it's hard.
The original title.
The original deed?
Mm-hmm.
From the, the original Latin range, way, way, way back?
And I don't have a problem with paying more than what you guys.
Why are we concerned about that?
Have on property, what I'm saying is, is that.
She feels that, leave that money for it.
Do we need to just have our lawyer talk to her and figure it out?
I emailed Bill, I haven't heard back from her.
Okay.
On the bottom of that email, you can see.
Yeah, I saw it.
I can reach out to Bill and, um.
Could we table this?
Yeah, so.
It's just a complicated.
I've just never heard of price reduction, price reduction in real estate due to.
It's because it doesn't clean the title.
No, it doesn't make that difference.
I don't understand the connection between the, between the.
Between what?
Reduction of price.
Right.
That part I don't.
Because it doesn't, it would not clear, it wouldn't clear the title.
Which doesn't help you.
Right.
And, and, and I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna, I just wouldn't wanna pay a full price on it.
Totally.
What I'm saying is, is that I can connect it to my, since it's there, and I have something we had to deal with.
Yeah.
I just wanna be able to connect it to my property.
Dean, you came here more than happy to pay what you agreed to pay with.
And, right.
You were excited, you were excited about the deal, Dean, you were excited about the deal, you were more than willing, you said more than one time, you were willing to pay that.
I've had a lot of people here, I thought you would understand it, but. I really.
Just because I don't agree with you don't mean I don't understand, Dean.
Well, I just feel that, I, I agree with the lawyer, I feel that it's, since it does have a clean title, and so if I wanna sell this property down the road, then I'm gonna have to pay more money to get the title straightened out.
I think, I don't think we need to argue about this, I think what, I think we don't, we don't have enough.
I'm just asking for some type of discount on it, because.
So, I think that that doesn't clean the title, so I think what we need to do is.
I mean, if you wanna pay the money on the title clean, I'll pay you the fifteen thousand dollars, I don't know.
We need, it needs to go to our lawyer to see if he agrees that there, that there are title issues.
We, it's, it's like, I, what I would say is like, we don't wanna, it's like, if you look at it like a, a used car, like, we don't wanna be the people that sell you a bad used car, so.
Without giving you a title.
You know what I'm saying?
And that's fine, you gotta get the title clean, I'll pay you the full price, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just saying that, you know, like the lawyer said, and, and she just felt that it was, you know, I'm not the one who brought that up, she's the one who brought it up, I do agree with it.
I completely understand, and that's why lawyers do.
Deed research, yeah.
Bill already told us that it wouldn't be able to be being financed, because you wouldn't be able to get title insurance on it, because of the way it, because we apply.
So they're gonna have to relax.
After a certain, until a certain period of time has passed, because of the way it's applied.
The issue isn't with our deed.
Right, I know, but you still can't, you don't get title insurance for it.
We got it, so that hasn't changed, nothing's changed from the original deal.
It's not able to be done right now.
Right.
I know, but you knew that.
And that was a quick, no, I explained, I explained.
Well, again, that burden's not on us.
I, I explained that to you, that you couldn't get financed. So, the burden is on us to clear the title, Dean, that's what it said.
And I, and I agree over that, that's fine.
Yeah, we're not gonna sell you a bad piece of property.
Okay, so I think this, I don't think that we have, like, we don't have, we don't have the information or the expertise to solve this tonight, it needs to go to somebody who's, to a lawyer who's familiar with deed research to see what we need to do.
Yes.
But we're also not gonna sell it to anybody else. It's not gonna go.
Just be patient, we'll get there.
I think, but I really still like.
Yeah, so the, yeah, eventually, yes, becomes an issue. But we're gonna move on, thank you for coming, and bear with us, please. Alright, uh, next is select board to consider approving cannabis cultivator license for Integrity Farms. Which.
Gone through zoning.
Gone through zoning, and they just have like, they basically have four conditions, and only one of them seems to be a new condition. And it's to do with filtering out smells.
One, one of the things that, um, the state is starting to do with these permits, is when they're in a, when it's a home business, they're giving a warning that shouldn't have, like, the high light, like, uh, high energy lights and confined spaces, and they're just concerned that.
Fire.
Fire, yeah, so that, so if he has an employee, um, they have, they're gonna have to, they're gonna fall under that curfew of the fire management. So, there's, there was a letter that went to.
Fire, marijuana fire.
How many burns you gonna have?
I'd like, I'd like you back, I'd like you back on the fire.
Yeah, you could tell me, I think I'm the same thing.
But a hungry, but a hungry, happy firefighter.
So, um, I don't, he's gone through all the.
Right, and as, and as we've previously discussed, if there's, the only real reason to deny somebody is if they're violating our zoning bylaws, and zoning is already.
We don't get to do that.
No, they've already cleared it.
I appreciated your, your.
Supporting that article.
Well, I can, I can make a motion to approve the cannabis cultivator license for Integrity Farms.
Yep.
Second?
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, skipping three of those removed, going to four, select board to discuss bridge summary document and approved pedestrian bridge design characteristics and features.
That sounded important.
So, it is important because if you start thinking about wanting to get this built next year, and you start backing up the dates, and then you start realizing that you need to say, this is our design, please start engineering it.
Let's pick it.
Yep, let's do it.
What do you want, Sherry?
Well, we've, the, the team that's been working on it can tell you what the recommendations generally are.
Go ahead.
You guys will say, we're out.
You're in the group, but did you prepare something, or?
Yeah, here we go, so. Yeah.
Look at Casey go, bailing that out, bailing you guys out again. Bang.
There's a mock-up in the bottom left there on the screen of what it would look like, so it's, uh.
Oh, we're gonna have a little patio out there?
No, not that one, the one below.
Right there.
That one, a little flowers on it, and people, too.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so, um, that's the, the design that most people liked when we did our.
That was option one.
It was option one, most people liked that one with, when we did our community outreach, um, it's also the cheapest one, um, I think we.
It's expensive. I was gonna say, that's what you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Still expensive.
Still a couple hundred grand, but at least just for the bridge part, um, so, the, I think. Sure, I don't have it in front of you.
Okay, so what we did was.
Go ahead.
Um, we, we can add to the, the basis of design is a six-foot wide bridge.
Eight foot wide.
The basis of design, six-foot wide bridge, we've agreed to engineer an eight-foot wide bridge.
Which would be dual traffic, right, that you could have like.
Two-way traffic, dirt bikes, snowmobiles.
Horses.
I think the idea was by going to eight, so our current bridge is.
We have chairs.
Four.
Uh, four and a half or something.
Just under.
So not even the width of the sidewalk, an ADA sidewalk.
Right, so, so six would, would be, well, yeah, it would work, eight would be, uh, cost more, but it makes it, people could stop, hang out at the bridge, and you still get by.
Each other, people could, two people can walk at the same time and not have to move over to pass each other.
And then we have a couple options for decking, which is pressure treated or black locusts.
The base.
Basis for design is pressure treated.
Is pressure treated.
Yep, and then there's railings, handrails.
Steel?
And then lighting.
Wood.
Uh, pressure treated.
Everything's, the frame's steel.
Every, the frame's all steel.
Galvanized painted.
Yeah, and we have to.
Okay, so that, that was also, galvanized painted is an option, add-on that.
What about, just not, not after doing them where they're just natural?
Weathered steel?
Yeah.
Salt really wreaks havoc on.
They were.
But, we know from history that salt really wreaks havoc on everything, it's a matter of, untreated is easier to treat than to have to sandblast and.
Well, it's.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, you're good.
I asked the same thing.
Whatever's best is what I want.
I think the galvanized option is the best.
I like the galvanized soap, you know, galvanized.
Oh, galvanized, galvanized.
Well, I, there again, when you paint something, you're, you're, no matter the amount of the salt, you're encapsulating moisture, and it's always gonna eventually rust from the inside out, no matter what you do.
So why would you go pressure treated and not?
So the galvanized is, the only face of galvanized is what saves you, you see what I'm saying?
Pressure treated relatively.
But it's not, it's not the right color, really, I mean, that looks nice.
So the railings, that we should make better by designing, galvanized.
Yeah, if you go down, you'll see that.
So, just to, just to understand the customizing, is it now basically up to us to choose the customizing?
Yeah.
Like, the community's chosen the general design, the committee's presented some options, so tonight we're saying like, yeah, let's do this.
Going forward with these things, yeah.
It would be awesome to have some sort of homage or connection to Lucian's railings, if those are gonna stay, I don't know if that's possible.
In the public, um, engagement, that was, didn't come out.
Okay, great.
Didn't come out on top.
Some lighting would be nice.
Even with Lucian.
Lighting.
Okay.
The lighting is, is part of it.
Yeah.
Integrated handrails.
Yep.
Or integrated lighting in the handrails.
I mean, I'm off for whatever, I, I don't care really necessarily, it's, it looks great.
Yep.
I just want it built in the.
Yes, to be minimal.
Menableness, to be the longevity of it, stuff is more important, like, I don't really like the, the galvanized color, but I do know that the galvanized, standalone galvanized will last longer than anything else.
Yeah.
So, uh, painted galvanized, I'm sure today's technology will get us well past our lifetimes, so that might be a good option, but certainly, that's what, all I really care about is, let's build something that'll last actually as long as it'll last.
Yep.
But then, within reasonable cost, and I think that's very attractive.
So honestly, our biggest top, like, the bridge itself, that, you know, we're talking about for the bridge and the options, the cost of that is gonna be overshadowed, um, by the abutments and all that other work.
Just the abutments.
Hmm?
And the retaining wall.
Yeah, the retaining wall and all that, so, I mean, really.
Even the biggest part of it.
It is not the biggest part, so adding the, the galvanized to get us something that lasts longer, I think is probably worthwhile in the grand scheme of the project.
Can I ask just a really quick question about the lighting, what's the difference between the point lights under the handrail and the lighting integrated in the handrail?
That's a great question.
Fixer.
Do we need to have it integrated for a hundred thousand dollars?
No, we do not.
Do we need, is it enough to have the point lights under the handrail? Great, let's work that.
You see the point lights right there?
Yeah, yeah, that's all we need.
Yeah.
Right, that's better than what we have before.
Yeah, 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 no, worry about it, worry about it.
We, we do have an option to put in, um, uh, lighting controls, so we could have all different types of colors, latching and.
LED, yeah.
Rapid.
Christmas season, music play.
Okay, sorry.
Alright, let's get away, very late here, to that bridge.
Okay, so we could get, okay, great.
Um, so wood, yeah, wood, so we have a choice on the decking, we could do pressure treated, there, there was a composite choice that was not recommended because.
They don't, I don't think.
They don't do it, they said they don't do it.
Oh, they won't, the contact doesn't do it.
Because it's too slick.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think there's still some unknowns about what it is gonna look like in fifty years.
So the, so the other option that they threw out was a black locust decking, which is, you know.
More money?
The money difference is twenty thousand more is the upcharge.
But then they take it off, they take some amount off of the.
Well, it's forty-eight thousand upcharge minus twenty-eight thousand deduct from base, that is twenty.
I don't know where you got that.
I got it from Sherry.
Is that better?
Is this in the, the, I can go to it, so.
Yeah, so it's, um, near the end.
It's twenty-three, I think, and I think probably save one, right?
Yeah, I think so, it's just different format.
Yeah, I brought that option.
And again, I, I just, whichever of those woods is better.
There it is.
Go up a little bit.
Yeah, whichever, uh.
Twenty-three of twenty-five.
Whichever is, whichever is gonna last longer, I'm for, I, I'm not a big pressure treated fan, so. If we could use something like.
Well, Tom just made a good, and I, I did see, I think in the picture above that, we could use potentially poor concrete, concrete slabs.
On a deck?
Isn't that a weight issue?
Right, lightweight deck concrete.
Deck concrete, lightweight.
Yep, a couple inches.
Be a bad idea.
That's not a bad idea.
Be worth looking into.
Yeah, what's that?
How does it handle the winter?
Good.
Like our sidewalks would?
Yeah.
This is a no-salt area anyway.
Yeah.
Dean.
It's worth asking what the price is.
It's worth asking about the price.
It is, 'cause they make lightweight deck concrete now.
That's what happens, you see the concrete above, you see the one above it?
Yeah.
Or is it a pipe handle, that's concrete.
Yep.
Probably do asphalt, too, if you're.
So, I have a question, these A and B options, so the additional cost, um, this is where we need to come down through and choose.
Yeah, exactly, so, so start at the top.
Okay, so the H section or underhump?
We like H section.
So, yeah, the recommendation of the group was the H section.
'Cause it's cheaper, well, and also the underhump, yeah, it looks good, too.
It doesn't look as heavy.
Right, the underhump had huge, um, beams underneath.
On top of your face, right?
No girders, underneath.
Underneath, so when you're looking from the side, it made the bridge look chunkier.
So the actual, the actual structural part of the bridge is part of the, the features.
Right, in, in the H section.
Yep.
Structures in the, in the bridge itself, railing itself.
Yep, exactly.
Which is what we're seeing in most bridges nowadays.
Seems like it's worth sixty thousand dollars to add a couple feet to the whole thing, might as well.
I think it makes it nice.
It's gonna make it a lot easier to take care of it.
Oh, that's true, too.
We've got to rip off it.
And then, so, our. So, the decking material, um, if we took a note to inquire.
There's some question about.
So we have the pressure treated option, or we have the black locust option, but we'd like to, uh, source a local, uh, black locust option if possible from, or have it milled out at a local mill, and then that way we'd have some extra on hand if you need.
There's a decent amount of black, there's a decent amount of black locusts right by Wiz's house.
That's what I said, I got four black locust trees, they need to come down.
Yes, she does, right by Daniel's block building.
Let's take them.
Yeah.
Are they black locusts?
But we're gonna check on the cement thing, so.
I ain't never seen a black locust.
Yeah, they're right there, it's really weird.
Is there enough board?
Well, if you can find it, I would like.
We're gonna check on the concrete.
We're gonna check on the concrete, though.
Yeah.
Just, just, just.
So concrete and then there, but it sounds like people are leaning towards black locusts, not pressure treated, yeah?
Yep.
Absolutely.
I always liked it better.
Okay, uh, next, finish, paint, just straight up, painted steel is the base, and then the upgrade is to galvanize it first and then paint it.
Could we, can we ask what, what the cost difference is if we just have it galvanized and don't paint it? If that's what we lean towards or something?
I wonder if it's hot dip.
Galvanized was the most, I think painting it is gonna be like ten thousand, I think the galvanized.
Yeah, the hot dip galvanized would be the most. So I don't have a problem with painting with, I'm sure the technology, yeah, I'm sure the technology now is.
Painted galvanized.
Definitely not, yeah, painted steel is out.
Okay.
I agree. Painted steel sounds like a bad idea.
Yeah.
Railings.
Railings with the.
No railings.
So.
You ain't tough, you ain't crossing.
There's the ver, so the vertical picketed railings are right, just to the right of that, you see the picture?
The brown?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, actually both of them. And then, um.
So that's similar, similar to what the fence looks like, right?
Vertical picket with pipe handle.
It's not a match, but it's a similar.
It's both vertical, they're not like horizontal or.
That's their total length.
Oh, yeah.
And then that's that second one.
Those are steel?
Whether it's steel.
Yeah.
So what's the wood cap top that's like over the top railing?
No, that would be on the railing. The railing is what you hold with your hand.
The hand.
Oh.
So just have a, it have like a flat top.
So you could get some splinters as you're walking around.
But it's gonna be how wide, forty-two inches?
Uh, whatever the, um, whatever the standard is.
Maybe it would be probably forty-two.
You're, it's just the rail, like the railings. So you're still gonna have that, that actual bridge and the.
Right, this is just the fall of the bridge.
The railings are inside the.
Yeah.
So the, the picture at the bottom, I don't know why I have such a hard time with this, but the, the picture at the bottom, the brown one, it looks to me like there's a handrail running halfway.
Vertical pickets with I P E rub rail, that's a rub rail.
Rub rail.
And this, these are your.
Vertical pickets.
Ver, vertical pickets and then.
That top is the bridge structure itself.
That's part of the bridge.
Right.
Yeah, but the, could you show us where the handrail would be?
Yeah.
Right on top, here.
There you go. On top of the pickets.
It'd be turned, yeah?
And then there's a rub rail that's.
That's just flat.
Okay.
It's just a board.
That's just so you don't stick it, that's okay.
Where I bump it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Tommy bumps it with it.
I mean, I don't know if it matters at all that, but.
So, uh.
So are we deciding, are we deciding if we need, if we need a wood cap top as the next choice?
I feel like personally.
I don't need one.
Nope.
What is that?
The wood cap.
Not.
On the rail.
But just opportunity for water to seep out of it and then suck the socket and deal it.
So we, we just want option A there, the vertical pickets.
Railings.
Yeah.
Yep. Lighting, so light, if we want some lighting, B and C are roughly equivalent in price, one of them is integrated, looking down from the handrail, and the other one is this little thing that attaches on each post and looks down.
It's gonna be.
And I don't think that, to me.
The question is which one is most vandalizable?
Or easiest to replace.
Yeah, they're probably both a pain.
But we asked, I don't know if you got an answer.
We didn't.
We didn't?
I missed, uh.
We're talking about the lighting, you, I know you inquired about what's the.
I said the mouse button is railing post.
But you asked about how do you change it?
They gotta get us that orientation.
But, uh, do we assume that the.
Okay, so this, the post-mounted lighting is this little box, right, that's on each individual post, and then this is what it would look like without the railing, right? It's like under the.
What page?
This is on the same page of the packet, it's just higher up on the slide. It's on twenty-three, it might have gone into, it's right, if you go down a little bit, Casey. And then, yep, right there. So that's the post-mounted light. How, where's every?
Oh, I see, I've seen those before.
And then those are under the railing.
But the under the railing one, I don't.
The railing ones are the most expensive.
The post.
No, this is under the railing, that's not.
No, that's same price.
Basically the same price.
The point lights.
I chose the, what I, I thought that it was like the twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Right, two thousand dollars more.
That's under the handrail.
Under the handrail.
Which, when we think about accessibility, that's also what you want, right, is you want people.
Under the handrail looks a lot less knockable than the, on the post one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's not gonna get.
On the post one, it kinda sticks out there.
You could take off.
They're too easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just gonna be kicking, it's gonna be kicking it, targeting for everything.
So either the integrated.
So we want C, option C?
Yeah. Well, no, because that's different, we said, we said we did not want the integrated handrail, which is the hundred thousand dollar one.
Right.
So the point lights under handrail is not, it's not that last option, it's the middle option. Cause that's the integrated option, which is the really expensive one.
I can't even see that.
You can't see like the detail of the C option, it's just like the.
That's the A option right there, and that's gonna go. Jesus, that bridge is ugly. Never realized that bridge is so ugly.
You see, so maybe, I don't know if there's a detail of it.
It's just lit, I see.
Well, I think we wanna go with the C anyway.
C.
C.
C?
That's the one I chose.
C?
That's the one everybody else chose.
All right. See, there endeth our choosing.
Awesome.
That was everything?
So that's everything except, except that, um, well, there's a concrete question about the.
Concrete, yeah.
And there's, there's still the issue about how difficult it is to change the lights and.
They have to get that to the right.
Yeah.
But it looks like you just screw out and replace that.
And hopefully they're very long-lived. Yeah, yeah, good idea.
If there were any.
Yeah, yeah, everything's.
So the structure was H section.
Yeah.
Eight-foot deck width.
Yeah.
The decking material, black locust.
Oh, unless the concrete is appealing. I don't know how we're gonna do that after that.
We have a question about the concrete. I don't think it's gonna work, but there might be a prepass concrete option.
I would donate those trees.
Wiz has black locusts.
I have black locusts.
I think we should just do black locusts.
I do, I do, too.
Forget the concrete.
Forget the concrete.
Okay.
We just know that it's for locally impossible.
Let's move this far.
Yeah, they're just gonna get the, yeah, forget the concrete.
And then finished, painted and galvanized.
Yeah.
We gotta choose the color.
Um, is.
Not me, I'm not choosing color.
Is option A, the vertical picket railings.
Yeah.
And then lighting is the point lights under the handrail, option C?
Yeah.
Which will we, okay. Um, and then they're with the colors of Lucian's.
Or the, it's the galvanized, doesn't color.
Yeah, I assume they're gonna, they're gonna give us paint chips. But they're gonna give us palette paint chips, but why wouldn't we just do black, because then it blends with Lucian's red.
Black or dark brown or something like that.
Easier to source black usually.
I want the more architec people to decide what color we should.
All right, the Archie Farces.
Somebody with an eye for that.
Someone who should color it black.
Sherry and Kaylee are gonna work on the color after. That's gonna be your last.
The important thing is where's my name plaque go?
Like, that's the last thing they're gonna do to the bridge is paint it, so.
Last thing we do is put this bridge.
Last thing we do is swing it in place.
Missed Danny Hale Bridge.
The memorial bridge?
No.
Casey, are there any other decisions that we need to make for that?
Let's hope we get them.
For now, yeah.
So then for the bridge, and this is my like rough calculations, that's about like four hundred fifty thousand dollars just for the bridge and those customizations.
Scroll up to the.
Four fifty?
Just with all the.
More than.
Just, just for the bridge and the customization, right?
From just below that one is the cost summary.
Or the design, I guess.
Right there. So this, I think is very high.
This is everything?
Yeah.
With a ten percent contingency and, um.
Million.
Yeah.
So.
Send that.
We're, um, yeah.
That's.
We'd be able to get the transportation grant, so then we would be just about a hundred fifty thousand off.
I think this is a high estimate.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sure we want it right now.
Yeah.
So Sherry, do you wanna say that more loudly?
So if, what is that? I can't, I can't.
It says one billion.
It's nine, nine hundred seventy-one thousand construction cost, and then seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars for design and engineering, which is a total of one million four hundred nine thousand two hundred and ten.
So we have seven hundred now, right?
Six twenty.
Six twenty, so, and we're hoping to apply for the transportation grant. If we can get the rest of our, another two hundred thousand, if we can get the information quickly enough put together. And one of the hitches, it's due, the grant is due.
We may have way on that today.
On January thirty-first, but the section one oh six could be, but we're hopeful about it. So that leaves us about four hundred off.
I don't think it's gonna cost as much as they say, but this is a, this is a high level estimate.
That would leave us about two hundred off.
Two hundred, I'm sorry, I forgot to take.
And less than that, because we knocked off one of those options that was the lighting was so American.
And you're getting your locust free.
Yeah, free the locust.
All right. Let's go.
That's good.
So.
Yeah, great.
Can I just pick one, like, so this is, this is more about, not about the new bridge, but under demolition of existing bridge structure. Um, I think it would be really cool, especially since we have that MRA grant to make some sort of kiosk hang out at the Daniel's Block Building, to use some of the structure to create like a kid's swinging bridge, or some sort of like, do something as a homage to that swinging bridge, rather than just like taking it all to AMR.
We've talked about it in the, in the discussions about the park, but so.
Because it's a historical structure that we're taking down, the section one oh six will come back with an adverse, adverse opinion.
Yeah.
So we will have to do something with that.
Okay.
As a memory agreement to get the funding from.
Okay, great.
So that's best discussed.
Awesome.
That's a great idea.
Yep.
And we'll have a, a plaque, some sort of picture outlining what the, where the old bridge was, what it looked like, who built it, kinda thing.
How long it lasted.
How long it lasted.
And the bridge before that, and the bridge before that.
Okay.
Papa Bridge, Grand Papa Bridge.
Awesome, this is exciting.
Yeah, so with any luck.
Getting there.
We're getting there, but believe it or not, the timeline is tight to get it built next year.
Very tight enough, we needed to make these decisions tonight because we need to get that thing put out.
All favor.
We did it.
And we need to tell contacts that they can build this thing. Cause it's gonna take them how many months?
Six months.
Six months in there in North Carolina, and then what do they do, drive it up here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right?
So the board generally agreed on all those. All right, so that's great, we're gonna move along to item five. This is to review and authorize a municipal resolution for downtown transportation fund grant for said bridge.
This is what you were just talking about, right, Sherry?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So we need, there's, it's in here, I read it.
I read it.
The municipal resolution.
Should be resolved.
I can motion to authorize municipal resolution grant for the transportation fund if we need to do that.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Basically says we're gonna apply for funding, uh, for the state of Vermont for the twenty twenty-two budget act.
This was a grant I brought up in the previous manager's report that you gave me in form of.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what I've been going for with this.
Any, so any more discussion about this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you Tracy for working on that for us.
Good job, Tracy.
And it's available to us because we're getting our downtown designation.
Sounds good.
Tracy says thanks to everyone she's signing off.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy. Oh, I didn't even have to do this. Next, where are we?
Uh, now, now we have the, the draft.
Budget?
Ground number five about the public hearing.
Thank you, yes. Uh, it's left for to discuss the time data, public hearing, um, about the gravel pit bond, so just to harp on about this in case anybody's following along and doesn't know this, the town is, um, our current gravel pit is gonna be played out in a year or two, and, um, we have an opportunity, a very good opportunity to buy a new gravel pit that's located on Route fourteen, heading north out of town, um, and we have a, um, uh, option.
Draft purchase.
A draft purchase and sales agreement on that, and we're gonna put it to a bond vote to the people on town meeting day, and, um, it'll, it'll be a net benefit to the town because over the time that we own the thing, it'll be a reduction in our gravel costs and our sand costs. Anyway, sorry, so I'm setting the stage there, so we need to warn that, um.
And we have a meeting, we have a select board meeting the second of March, right? That's the first Thursday, can we have it the same day?
We could have a board meeting.
Yeah.
That always works pretty well.
It does work pretty well.
Second of March, that's when we're having a town meeting, though, right?
He's written that calendar up there.
No, March seventh is the meeting.
So is that, that's our pre-town meeting, town meeting?
Oh, probably so.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a good time to do it.
That's perfect.
We could do it like this. Five now, like it's the public hearing for the gravel pit and our pre-town meeting.
I think so.
We do that with the charter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When we meet at the. When we meet at five?
On the second.
No.
Wait, so, oh, we have a meeting on the second, and town meeting is second, got it.
Or five fifteen, like, so we don't like.
Yeah, you give people time. I don't, I'm not sure I'm here on the second, but that doesn't matter.
People historically have not, so I think five thirty is fine.
Okay.
I have.
You know, you're gonna be.
That was.
Five thirty on March second.
But we need another one, right?
No, just one.
No? We just need one?
Information meeting, fourth town meeting.
Oh, between these dates, okay, got it. Yeah, yeah.
That's better than having a special meeting, right. That's way better than having a special meeting on a hot day and on night.
Yeah, where nobody's gonna come.
And Tanya's got most of that stuff by her, she should have that stuff by us tomorrow, the bond information.
And are we gonna get that before that meeting, so we'll look at it as a board?
There'll be bond stuff, like a resolution and these types of things.
Yeah.
Great.
She'll have.
Great.
Thank you.
You said, I wanna thank you something. You said it was a new gravel pit, slightly used.
Existing.
But back to.
Imperated.
Back to, you permit just that for me.
Which is a beautiful thing.
Beautiful.
Um, all right, so next up is recap of the entire FY twenty-four draft budget. Um, alright, so next up is recap of the entire FY twenty four draft budget. And I noticed Casey had notes in the version that she sent to us on the side, so there are items that wanted to call our attention to, I think.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with the revenue and budget summary and then go through just right through my notes here. Um, I need to share my screen again.
Okay, you're driving two computers. Yeah.
Alright, so.
Since this is so much, you guys started without screen.
It's a lot easier for me to read, even though it's smaller.
Yeah, you guys, we should come to my office, you wanna see the setup.
My screen crossed for like a sound.
We got two seventy, two seventy twos. I got two screens.
Might say you could hear.
Okay, so in the revenues. The one thing I wanted to discuss. Is. The possibility of using our remaining uncommitted ARPA funds, which is.
Just using them as revenue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Injecting that into this budget um as a one-time amount, so that was something for consideration. It is in here, so when we get to the whole rate and what it, what it does for us, so. So that, that was my option there. In highway, um, there's notes here um on overtime, looking at um. Usually, so I did not increase the full amount of what we anticipate it would cost. Kinda take a gamble on like what we spend in twenty two, so it will be higher and added some cushion in for that. Um, so only increased it by three thousand a year over the year, so it's a little bit of a gamble, but.
Boy, it doesn't pay much to be sewer operator, does it?
That's just, okay, that's just for time that um, that the sewer operator plows.
I'm deep.
And so it's very small, so, yeah.
Okay, go on, man.
Hey, stop stirring up awkwardness.
And then under the winter stand. As soon as we did the pit, that was reduced for this year only because um, there's not much.
There's two seasons of winter stand that are in stockpile.
So.
Yeah.
We did not reduce gravel though because there's still the cushion cost.
So that winter stand, that's just the purchase cost, the trucking cost isn't in there, right?
Processing.
Right.
That's not in there.
The, the.
Costs ever again?
It still goes when it.
It's.
Right, but there's two years' screen worth there now, is what you're saying, is what you're saying is we already have.
Two years' screen.
Two years of screen.
Right, so that means.
You guys screening again.
So.
You have to speed again.
No.
No, no, okay. No, we were just talking about what's, what.
Right, what's in there, but trucking is not in that number, that's just the purchase price.
Well, no, that we have diesel fuel for, I mean, they.
Right, right, but that's not set aside.
Somebody else who are purchasing it, so.
I know, I guess I'm wondering, like, if we just look at the budget, if we either look at the actual from twenty one to twenty two or the budget twenty two, twenty three. Is that number just the purchase price of this?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, that's always the purchase price of these.
And the, the trucking and everything is extra?
General operating expense.
Right, it comes out of.
Just like, doesn't matter.
Yeah. So do we, so if we get, if the voters vote to buy that pit. Where, where does that ten thousand dollars go? Cause we're not buying.
We had it as zero, we don't think it's a good idea to gamble on.
In case, in case the bond vote doesn't pass. I see.
I agree.
Got it.
As well as.
I'm with you now.
Are we into something?
I would suggest if we got two years ahead, we should get into the cycle of always having a year ahead.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, you know, cause then there's a hiccup somewhere.
But, I mean, if we have a stockpile and we've got room and it, it would always be good if we needed to skip a year.
Yeah, if there was some hiccup and you couldn't do a year.
Something.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen with all the other material that's up there, all the topsoil? Are we gonna be able to sell that?
Can we use that?
The topsoil is gonna be retained by the current owner.
Yeah.
For, with Elise.
Yeah.
That's his material.
No, that's good, it's entered quite a bit of process material. So everything other than the sand is processed?
There's roughly a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars worth of processed material that would go to the sale.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so we leave the ten thousand in as sort of a hedge in case the on vote doesn't pass and we don't end up, and we're, and we're still buying sand. Okay.
So Vermont, office and cable, um, the discussion clearly hasn't been any changes in this since last time. Um, the discussion item was health officer, whether or not um, nobody wants to do it. Um, Eric is actually our health officer currently because if nobody does it, then it defaults to the select from here. And the town manager is the deputy, um.
Who does a lot of the work, thank you.
Oh my goodness, I get buddy flash, I got the flashes here.
Discussion of our.
Deputy Dogg and his chief sheriff.
Whether or not that needs to be hired to entice somebody to wanna do it.
What's the, uh, I know the answer to this, is, is there's a function of that office that is important to the town.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
But you can't force people to volunteer.
Government's doing it.
So what professional?
State law, that's what forces it.
Yeah, what professional?
Where you're forcing state.
Right, sectors, that, so that's what I'm saying. It's one of those things.
There's some training required and there's, I mean.
Or at least it looked like.
So, yeah, six hundred dollars is not gonna get you someone that's.
No.
Right, that's the point, it's been that and.
I thought it just, my thought is that it should be at least as much as like.
Well, no, so what is that position, I mean, is that, does that, does it need to be, that's my point, I guess.
Pay by the call.
Is what, what would we hire, I mean, for example, if, you know. Where's your background, what, do we hire a doctor to do this, or does it need to be, you know, the sewer guy or the?
American.
What, I don't know, what is the job description? And what does it look like, who, who would we hire?
Where are the, where are we at with the job description idea?
Well, that's.
That's.
The job description for the health officer is, is by statute.
Yes.
Yeah, it's in our, it's in our.
I, you know, advertised it and said, here's a link to the, exactly what that person has to do, um, and.
Well, it should probably be at least what a select board member.
That's what I thought.
The other piece is like, we have animal control, for instance, that is a monthly stipend all throughout the year to re, to respond to all of the calls. Or you can pay them per, like, if they have to go do a property inspection.
Well, hopefully we won't have to do charter inspections.
Like, not as well as.
That's supposed to be taken care of by the Vermont, um, part of the safety fire market.
I've gone, I've gone, I'm gonna have to run by myself.
Is somebody being handled?
Yeah.
Like TV?
I'm just trying to figure out who we were saying.
You see what I'm saying? I totally, I totally understand, like, who would, who, who do you look to, if you could hire somebody for this?
You know, the rescue squad volunteers dried up and now we hire paramedics, that was, you know, we had, we had.
Potentially.
Our volunteers dried up for help.
So.
Guys, who we hire, what's, what's that skill set?
Retired from.
I would, I would say, okay, I, I would say somebody who's level-headed, who's not gonna explode in, in a public setting, like, not gonna go off on somebody. Who can listen and be attentive and help people through.
Saying I'm out, okay.
Put potential, you have some background in, healthcare, rescue, maybe.
I don't think it's either, no, I think it's more like.
Law enforcement.
Compassion.
Compassion and some enforcement though.
It is an enforcement.
Because you're looking at, yeah, cause you.
Compliance, not enforcement as much, just compliance.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you need to look at the regs.
Right, so you need somebody.
You have to be willing to, you know.
To your point, it's people person, it's a problem-solving job.
Yes.
It's not, you gotta work with people to solve situations.
You have to do email.
You have to beg Larry.
So you have, I haven't seen there, you have, can't pilot on him.
Can we beg Larry to do it, cause he's doing all.
He's a minister.
Larry, Larry does not want to.
He's already paid off.
Dog.
Yeah, no.
There are certain parts of the animal control officer job that he's not willing to do.
Okay, sure, I feel like he's not a good candidate.
So it's.
Well, for tonight's discussion.
I don't really know, like.
I don't think raising it to six, a thousand dollars is gonna change our situation right now. It's a deeper situation, so if we're budget talking, let's move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when, do we have any idea when, so the state's supposed to be taking over part of it, the rental.
Just had an idea. That we might be able to entice one of our officers to take on this role for an extra duty.
Stipend.
Stipend.
I think that.
But I'd have to run my by the chief.
Yeah, run it by, see what he thinks.
Hopefully he's not listening.
Yeah, but tonight's discussion, we're not gonna change the budget amount.
Yeah, cause what will we do, and if I sit, if I continue to sit in it, then that's fine.
Maybe we should make the chief a police though.
I didn't even know, I didn't even know I was getting stipends.
Okay, so we're.
It almost is, yeah, almost.
All.
Because of the next meeting, we'll be.
Sixty percent.
Fine draft, so we're gonna wait till the next meeting.
Okay, I guess so, yeah.
Let's do it.
Moving on.
Couple of small adjustments and information came in for this. All increased three twenty-four percent by the least, least increase of any department. Questions about PD?
Sorry, what changed in PD?
I said, just a few small things, adjustments.
Oh, but you didn't make any notes about discussion there?
No, exactly, so just asking if there's any questions on this.
Uh, just the.
Chief's confident, there's a lot of pluses and minuses on this.
It's the least amount of increase at all.
I know that, but there's a lot of movement, is what I'm getting at, there's a lot of work in that budget.
Yeah.
On my point, if he's comfortable with it, I'm following his lead. Cause there's a lot of movement, that's a lot of work right there to try to get. Get what, get the desired outcome.
Yeah, going, yeah, and going forward, we still are thinking about trying to get other, uh, work into other towns to build, share this policy. Okay, uh, next.
Buildings one, I should say. So there wasn't anything for discussion here, I mentioned, I think last time that, um, as we received, you had mentioned Eric to look at fuel prices. Even though prices have come down, um, some since we initially started discussion. I, um, took a two-year average of use in the building and used four fifty a gallon and was able to reduce some of the fuel oil amounts that were in here from our original draft. So that's where these numbers come from, so they're not as high as they were.
Yeah, and the thing about that is we just don't know.
We don't know, but I mean, that's, I used a two-year average of usage and a four fifty a gallon. And lately, some of those, it, it fluctuates because we're not at price, I think we gave one the other day that was three fifty, three, like, so. Taking a little bit of the gamble by using four fifty.
And if we can lock in a price next year, Jen, what do we see?
Depend on volatility.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see that happening until.
You don't think so?
Wow.
Only surprise.
I wish I did.
Yeah.
But that's gonna be pretty straightened out, a lot of these world issues that are gonna.
Yeah, that are driving that.
Well, that's true though. It's there. We, we talked about that, so we, we have for the town. Uh, I was also mentioned too, I know that, uh, Bill Shitzy has had a hard time getting people to join the energy committee. But it would be great in the future to work on some efficiency Vermont work for some of our older buildings to help with.
We just, we just installed two hybrid hot water heaters.
Awesome.
From a grant that part of electrical ELS. Um, I'm looking at a heat pump for the community center side, cause that furnace is on borrowed time, and it's not that efficient. Um, so yeah, we are looking into that, and I, I've been.
It's about forty-five degrees the other day, we were in there.
Really?
Yeah, but the snow girl club's cold. Times are tough.
Okay, and then, um, next question, so then there's a second page for buildings.
Okay.
Overflow, um, so they could all be on one. Um, basically, I'll give insurance to care, so, I mean, the townhouse shows it's going up twenty percent, but it's, it's four hundred dollars just because it's a small budget, so.
Right.
Um, insurance, um, no changes for depot, carryout, yellow barn, um, there's a master lease. For our wastewater, that little house to address, that's probably gonna add a couple hundred dollars, um, to our annual fee, so that's what that is.
Why is the townhouse so high with V L C T acid?
Yeah.
Look at the depot, a hundred and fifty bucks.
Because you have a balcony probably, and you have, probably there's a lot of people that show up in there.
Yeah.
That's my, that's, that's my thought.
Capacity.
I thought it was more about replacement than, cause we appear liability insurance for that, for the balcony and the interior. This is about building replacement.
Yeah, there's.
My, my point has been for years, that building, if it burns down, it won't be replaced. So why do we have to pay so much more, and why is the depot only a hundred and fifty? Like, is the.
Cause the depot is just a shed.
You don't wanna ask the question?
We can.
Cause. I mean.
The depot has a new, or the, the depot has a newer, it's like, in, in terms of, I'm not an insurance salesman or.
I'm just saying.
Like, I would say that, that building is, is less risk.
Yeah, there's a significant difference in that.
Associated with that building.
But I'm sure they actually love to raise the price.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll fix it. They'll raise the depot.
Value. I know that, you know, John asked about it.
Oh, there you go.
I would be happy to inquire on it.
Yeah, anytime we can get the insurance companies to lower their rates, all for that.
No, it, it won't be replaced, so it shouldn't be based on any kind of replacement value, it's not replace.
Right.
It's not.
It's not.
You could rebuild it.
No, it wouldn't be rebuilt in this, it wouldn't be the same building, so it's not replaceable in that way.
But I, we are paying liability insurance on an elevator because they won't sell it unless it's a package deal and includes an elevator. Don't get me started.
Don't say.
I question it, I just.
I'm just gonna say, when you talk to them and ask about why is the townhouse is so high, don't compare it to the depot, cause I could just see.
Oh, that's wow.
Right.
Oh, got your contact.
That's, but it's based on, it's not about the liability.
And I assume we have.
Well, there's significant structural difference between those buildings.
Yeah.
Foundations and such.
Foundations.
They're not even, yeah, I know, but they're not even, the depot is a barn. Townhouse is a townhouse.
It's real building.
Do we have?
There's a difference.
Highway garage insurance for, through somebody else?
No, it's on, um, buildings one here, um, oh, actually, so they're, um.
Oh, it's.
You know, why, because in high, cause they're.
They have a.
There's a line here that's V L C two and passive that covers the building here, so I can't really separate it out, that's why. But yes.
Great.
Okay.
All right, next.
Moving on, fire line items, I don't think there was any items, oh yes, there was an item for discussion, sorry. Um, it was back to the request that was received from the Fairview and Maple Street.
No, no, it was Main, Main Street.
Main Street and Fairview Sanitaries, which the request was for eighteen thousand dollars additional money for stone repair. And before the last meeting, I had, so normally our budget is eighteen, which is Stan Warren Cemetery gives Fairview and Maple Street money to cover their mowing. So that's where the eighteen thousand that's in the current budget is, so they're asking for eighteen more, so it would be thirty-six. But I am making a suggestion that if you decide to move forward with giving those funds, that it'd be done as six thousand dollars over three years. If I decide to.
The state no longer requires the cemetery commission to repair stones. There was a time when they did, not very long ago, but, but the law has changed, and so repairing stones is a nice thing to do, but it's not a requirement of the cemetery commission anymore.
I would also add that every cemetery, Stan Warren included, should have their own savings and capital fund, so I think that that is where they should start.
Yeah.
And that, because that's basically every sale that we make, that money goes to that fund that could be used for that cemetery, and we do have about, I didn't know, maybe the Harvard runs, I mean, maybe. Maybe we make that number, especially since we only spent seventeen last year. I mean, I would almost keep it at eighteen, but that's conservative, so.
Unless you say, unless you did that, right, and so they have made a request, they had sent you letters and whatever, all that, so that's why something was built in there for it. You wanna take it out?
It's great, great to review, I'm glad you're bringing it back to our attention, but.
Yeah.
My feeling is that, that, that type of work in the cemetery should be taken out of the cemetery's fund.
Great.
Okay. I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just leave that, that takes care of that.
Because we have a capital fund for cemeteries, right? As well.
We do, and then we, there were like, as, um, Stan Warren has funds set aside for potential care.
Right.
And I'm sure they probably do too, I mean, both.
Well, it seems like there's lots of money to be available because we are paying, because the town authorities are paying.
Right, right.
Which is very true.
So maybe, like, there would be some steps to the process, and the ones that are being applied for people to, like, not really.
Well, a lot of them are paid by, by the subsidies, so they're like small.
Actually, like, ten rooms, getting more stones and doing the sales.
Yes, so like the plot, the total plot about this, you go with the sex and it goes to whoever owns the cemetery, which is a decent amount of money, so. I guess the, I guess if they wanted, like, in my mind, if they wanted to make a request again, have they showing us where their, their budget and where their money is coming from, rather than just what they're saying, we need this money, cause that's all I saw, was that this.
No, that's all there was.
So if there was something that was like, we're putting in this amount of money, we need the town to put in this amount of money, that would be a little more understandable than.
This is what we're gonna accomplish with the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so we're not funding that for now, right?
Okay.
Okay.
So that's take it, that's take eighteen, so we're deciding.
Capital equipment. So, we, uh, set it aside, um, here it is, and fifty, and the reason it's down from last year. The reason that it's down from last year is because the lower two and greater one proposed payment is actually not in line items. Some of these debt payments are showing, they're moved over here, um, right, lower two and greater, so that payment is here and not here, so we don't have to transfer as much money. We basically should just transfer it and pay it out of here. Right then, I think I explained the order, so that it's just clean to just put it as an item, so people can see your debt payments.
This is the actual payment.
Yes.
Yeah, so that payment is.
I mean, this, this, this schedule is designed to pay, basically pay cash for things.
Yeah.
Correct.
And if they, and if you're leasing something, you don't need it in there.
I totally understand.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, everything's there, questions about this?
No.
Okay, capital fires, pretty straightforward, um, there's.
When, when are we racing the broken truck?
Yeah.
Twenty thirty?
Black question. Think we should.
You gotta say that like it's the wrong ways.
You can move it up.
Move it up.
You can move it up some, um.
That's for the fire chief to work out with the town manager.
Yeah, I must look, I'm eating that. I would wrestle the fire truck. He's bony, but he's good and stuff.
It'd be worth watching.
So I just wanna, uh, so once again, twenty twenty four, it's only fifteen thousand, but keep in mind, we have two fire truck bonds. Those are being paid out, paid out of line items, so we don't need to, they're just in a different place.
Yep.
Okay, um, capital roads, um, we did manage to sort of, um, adjust that last time so that we would actually be able to do some paving after the center road, presumably, um, hoping to get some eighty eight, state aid and twenty six, and then give you five fifty and we set center road partial, because it's probably not a beautiful thing.
So, when we, is that the thing where we need to, uh, there's like, you come up higher on the list if you haven't asked for money in a while and.
Yes.
Okay, and it's within our district? It's like you get your turn.
And it's like one hundred and seventy five thousand.
For a McDo Road project, and it was one other thing to use it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that kinda put us way down on the bottom of the list.
Right, we got a couple of good ones right now together.
And then that, but that's been a couple of years now, so it's like.
Two years, I think, yeah, at least three.
We wait till twenty twenty six to pave center road, it's gonna be pretty bumpy.
Yeah, I can just go back to dirt road.
I say that every time I drive over, sorry, don't drive over it anymore.
So, um, that's the plan here.
We'll work on that.
Capital general, um, there's a couple of items here, was, um, sidewalk expense and guardrails, if that amount should be higher, since we're looking at developing a replacement schedule for sidewalks similar to paving, um, the road crew has been doing some sidewalk inventory, taking measurements, working on that with our office to have a list of all the different sidewalks, so we can get a handle on.
That's great.
That, so to have some sort of schedule like paving, um, so, and guardrails as well, they did guardrail in the four, so they're working on it, they'll be on that. And so that was, you know, should we be going higher on that, no, we don't, we think that work is sidewalk, for instance, right now, it's about thirty four thousand, thirty two thousand, I think, with this year's allocation, so, I mean, that would get us some work done, but should we be doing more than that was sort of the question there. And the same thing regarding rails, because this deal is really expensive.
When do we, what's it?
Well, for example, if we did, we, if we replaced or rehabbed the sidewalk from, like, the whole flood zone lot down to Coolin Lumber, it'd be about a hundred grand.
Well, it'd be more than that, if you gotta fix like a flood zone, so.
That's just, that's just concrete company, that's all that is, that's not an actual contractor, right, and, and doing it. That's, I'm basing that on what Jeff gave me for price last year, and then I kinda increased it another hundred dollars more, more yard, cause everything else has gone up, so.
So that's doing it like you did this one.
Yes, we were supposed to, yeah, prep it and they were supposed to come forward and do it all, so.
I thought you guys ended up doing it.
They went and did it all.
I see.
Never again.
And basically, so is that?
That's not that tall.
Came out nice.
Well, there's, I mean, we got some issues, for example, all the way from the Catholic church to McDo.
Or the entirety of East Hardwick.
But that entire, well, I'm a Harwick guy, so.
That's part of Harwick.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying.
Oh, they're all over, all over, like, why don't we have a sidewalk that goes to the trailer park? A lot of kids walk from the trailer park to school.
But that is, my point is, is what's there is not, is not, uh, isn't right.
No.
You know what I'm saying, you can't, just putting pavement down through there again is not fixing the issue. Same with the flood zone, just putting a little bit of pavement around the ledges.
We wouldn't do that, we don't wanna do that.
Right, so my point being is a first foot concrete price doesn't make any sense.
Doesn't tell the whole story.
It's not even close to what it's actually gonna cost, my point.
It gives us a ballpark for.
But it doesn't though, that's my point.
At least on a hundred grand on top.
Uh, yeah, that's my point, the, the, the engineering alone will be as much as the concrete purchase price.
So your point is, it'll take us a hundred years.
It's a lot more, ten thousand dollars is, ain't gonna get it done ever.
So, that's the question before us, is do we really wanna.
But twenty thousand isn't gonna get it done either, that's kinda where I'm going, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a.
You, you may, for Wolf Street, if you ever hit around, to replace the water main, is that we do the sidewalk at the same time.
Right.
You put the water main in the sidewalk like we did going up South Main.
Yeah, I agree.
Every day in the project.
Yes.
But if we have a schedule, like, like with our paving schedule, where we basically say, okay, we're gonna do, which we should, we should say, okay, East Harwick in twenty twenty six or whatever, and then we say, okay, we're saving up over time and it's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars every.
Well, we're saving for matches, is all we're saving for.
Yeah, we're saving for some leverage grant funding.
Yeah, but that's also like.
It's all the nice.
Yeah, you never know, so like, I mean, I'm envisioning, this doesn't have to do with tonight, but basically a capital sidewalk schedule is the same as the road schedule. And then we can just.
That's what you're working on.
That is more, and it won't be the town, but no, because.
So do we need, so do we need to make, do we need to make F Y twenty four more than?
Yes, that's the question, and the guardrails, and then the third, the second question is, um, it was brought up about adding a specific line for East Hardwick Village.
I, I think.
Which I have, I think.
I, I'm, and I am in favor of including East Hardwick in the town of Harwick and not treating it as an independent republic, so.
As long, as long as it's in that schedule.
My thought on that, I, I understand your, your ground.
Yeah.
It's a designated village.
Yeah.
So therefore.
No, it isn't.
It is a designated village center.
It is designated village center.
Not an appropriated village.
No.
No, 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 in terms of, in terms of state funding programs, so we can access the same pot of money that we could for.
So it's a, having a line item shows.
Yep.
A way to leverage funding.
Well, so does, so does just committing something out of the side, uh, one of these lines.
Right, and, you know.
Their side, the sidewalks in East Hardwick were also measured, just like if they're part of the schedule, then they're not separated.
But if we, but if we said, if we say, for example, we put in thirteen thousand dollars a year, then would, would it be better to say to the state that we're committing that for sidewalks, that a small amount? Cause before, my rub of the budget was that we were committing a really small amount for East Harwick, that would never amount to very much. So if we're, if our goal is to really like work on sidewalks, which we really need to do, then doesn't it make sense to have that just be like, like that shows that.
Part of the capital improvement schedule, yeah, I, I can go with that.
As long as the money's there, as long as we're showing that, like, I don't know what that figure should be, but if that ten thousand dollars, it's just, it's just not gonna get us there, so.
I think we should change that ten thousand to twenty thousand, I don't know if that resolves anything, but at least it's a step in the right direction. So guardrails, somebody help me understand, to me, guardrails are something that you put in and then they just sit there forever.
No, they get pushed over by various things and events that happen, and then they.
Erosion, natural erosion.
Down into the ground.
Yeah.
Guardrails that have something to do with.
There, we saw fire type guardrails, which are.
Oh, we did?
Oh, yeah, going up center road, busting it.
Really?
Yeah.
We're not super effective there.
Before you get out of the barn, that whole stretch here, once you get down to the bridge, we're up the hill on the left hand side.
Really?
Yeah.
Huh, I guess I just never looked at them.
So, but, but if we, if we decided that we took out the money from cemeteries and we're putting it in, basically in the sidewalk, it's not gonna really change too much, right?
The net's out, right?
Yeah. If we keep, if we make that twenty thousand dollars.
But what about guardrails, do we need, what's, somebody told me what we need, what's the deal with guardrails? Like, do we need to be putting more in guardrails or?
And what do guardrails cost?
Then what do you do, use the wood?
Used, wood, metal.
What happened to that chunk that we took out of the park that you started, were you reusing that?
Over to shore.
Okay.
Resting, it's resting.
Yeah, we'd be having to do sections over there, not in this, I mean, stuff like that, you would hire a guarder company to come, come in anyways, but.
Yeah. A guardrail at the bottom would be in the hazel room, that'd be terrible, kill the state footballers.
Where that is mine.
That's my, as you come down to, onto sixteen, it'd be nice if the state put a guardrail there, just in case you, your brakes don't work.
Well, I'd rather be over the bank than I would be in the middle of a road or something, so.
Instead, they put.
I'm taking my chances.
In, um, on the North Walker Road, you know how people come down the North Walker Road on fourteen and they go into the cornfield? They finally put a blinking light there, blinking red light.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that was a common occurrence.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it still will be.
Yeah, yeah.
Just now, there's a make him either.
Did you, you made it twenty?
I made it twenty.
All right, let's move on, I'm hungry.
Well, you put a light landing on the bottom.
Do you wanna change side, do you wanna change guardrails? Anybody, for the ones?
I wanna, I wanna put them.
Well, what would it cost? I mean, there's, there's no point in.
Yeah, that must be the purpose right now.
How about we double for the, for the, like, the two thousand?
That's at least something.
We'll go look for a guardrail in the surrounding tents, but.
Reset.
Can we reuse any of the yesterday's bridge for?
Oh, yeah, the wire.
And so, we're not gonna make a separate line for East Hardwick, have we established that?
Well, I don't know, that's my.
No, we, we added to the sidewalk expense.
Yeah, and, and.
If they're a part of the schedule, then.
Well, like, if you want, you can do sidewalks up there next year, it's not gonna take twenty four thousand dollars to do from the bridge to the top hill.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, those are problems.
Is that's what you wanna put on your schedule?
Mark, we're quoting Tom on that one.
Sidewalk was down here, road was up there. I don't know.
Was that in?
He's wondering, the sidewalk's down in the drink and the road's up here, and it's more than just pouring a little concrete.
I mean, I just really, it's the same thing I just really said, is, we're, we're having a silly.
Let's not get discouraged.
Well, it's not.
Well, it's discouraging because you can't have the hottest conversation about what's happening. Pouring concrete on top of bad infrastructure is not the answer.
I agree.
You're gonna have to rip that, you're gonna have to rip that all up and do it.
Right, so I mean, that's an argument for having a separate East Hardwick line, that's basically your type, like a, like a Main Street redo, because it's redoing all the culverts, all the drainage, and the sidewalks are just covering the problem. That's what's happening, cause all, all the water goes into the sidewalks, and that's why all those culverts are failing. And all the runoff goes into the sidewalks and down to the bridge, so in order to really fix it, you'd have to get those above grade, which is like a foot and a half, maybe two feet in some places.
Could, could I make a suggestion? Um, I think there's a sign in Vermont that say, no burning, the policy is, there is no burning on hardwood roads.
Okay.
I mean, not hardwood, on state roads.
Birmingham.
There's burning, you get close enough to the side of the road and you, you, you flip your car, you know, you're, you're upside down there. Because the, the burning is what keeps you from falling into the ditch, I mean, these are ditches, you know?
Okay, we're.
So anyway, it happened to me, and I lost the car, and fortunately, I did have a seatbelt on, it would've been cut in half, you know? But, um, it was, um, uh, uh, turns out that's not a policy that most people would understand.
All right, so.
But there is a, an ordinance, I guess, maybe in the state.
I wanna bring us back into our sidewalk discussion, so we're, we could, I, I still feel that just having a single sidewalk line is perfectly fine. And, like, we don't have a North Main Street line in here for redoing North Main Street, which also has lots of drainage issues and no sidewalks once you get halfway up, even though it looks like it used to, um, so I don't think, I, I mean, personally, I don't need to see a line item for every sign in the town. Every, every, um, road in the town, so I'd like to just keep it as is, I think we need to fund it appropriately. I think right now, all we can do is take our best guess, because every individual project is gonna have its own circumstances, regardless, yeah.
Right, it's whether we do it or we hire a contractor.
And how much work needs to be done there, some of them are simpler than, some of them are just, you.
Not as complicated.
Not as complicated.
So we're, so, and that's, I think, the importance of those schedules, so that we know that East Hardwick projects, we say, well, it's gonna help with the extension.
Yep.
Then we can save for it within that schedule, understand how much it's gonna cost.
Right, it sounds like there's an inventory happening now, and that'll help us, but it's, but it's not gonna be done tonight.
So we're saying we're gonna put more wood in, in anticipation of more expense into sidewalks.
Yeah, and some of them will be in East Hardwick, but probably not all of them.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any more questions about this? Uh, library, I don't think we're really gonna talk a lot about, they were here last time, and basically, there's a, there will change, other than the fact that there's a change in health insurance policy, um, or the library director, um, change in status, so, really straightforward, they're gonna use a good chunk of the fund balance from the priorator, um, and to reduce their ask. And then trails and rec, pretty straightforward, um, I know we forgot the fireworks from line item and decided that.
Caught her.
Uh, excuse me, the recreation would, um, help with quite a fast to support that with their budget. And, that's it.
Yep.
Oh, I don't know, let me just go back to, I should have questions about that, to the tax rate after.
Trail insurance.
Right here.
So, what to set due to the file?
Okay, so this, I might have to say there, sorry. Okay, so. This is, um, the proposed tax rate, and in fact, a hundred thousand dollar home, we've been talking right along about contributing a hundred and twenty five thousand from the fund balance to offset the tax rate, so this top section shows what we would need to collect for taxes, less the fund contribution, and then what we would need to collect after that, um, and then we divide up the grand list, and so it's a dollar thirty eight point three eight seven compared to last year, um, so it shows right down here, um, about sixty dollars, um, a hundred thousand dollar home, for a hundred thousand, four point five eight percent. Um, and then down here covers just the appropriations alone, um, if those were added in, it makes it six point two nine, for eighty three dollars for a hundred thousand, roughly.
But, what people are voting on in town meeting is.
Budget.
Only the budget.
Correct, this is just a tool for people to.
Get an idea about what it would be, but they're not.
They're voting on this increase in the budget of four point seven eight percent.
Or they're voting on the number of three million seven hundred thirty by three eighty four.
Right there, yes.
Yeah, which is a four and three quarters percent increase, but I, I think, given the climate that we're in, the inflationary climate that we're in, it's not bad, I mean, it's not.
I think it's good.
I think we did a heck of a job.
Yeah, yeah.
Considering cost of living is eight point seven percent, two point three, and.
And fuel costs have been, are really high, I mean, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a reasonable.
Well, there's no choice, because everything, every, every department did their damnedest, there's no increases other than what that we have no control over.
Insurance.
No one's getting anything extra here, no new toys.
These all solved, this one, those driving messes.
Right, I mean, I think this is, right, it ends up being the budget that we think that's still continuing all the services everybody's expecting at the same level.
Services, yeah.
Right.
But it's also anticipating that the cost of the town is gonna go on, and we're setting money aside to meet those, so we don't have to bond and pay interest on money that we use to spend on trucks in the future.
That's a good point. You're absolutely right, like, all the.
All those.
Just used to avoid money that was set aside to avoid borrowing.
Right.
By paying cash for our.
So, yeah, I just wanna note one thing that confused me, and I don't know, I would draw confusion to anyone else, but at, at first, when I looked at this, I thought it was strange that, um, our, the increase for the property tax is five point two percent, that not to be raised, the taxes is five point two percent, but then our, on the other page, our increase is like, the, the projected increase on home after appropriations is six point something, it's a little higher. But I think the reason for that is because last year, we also used some of our fund balance to offset the tax, and we use more, the greater.
Correct, we use a hundred and twenty five thousand.
And so that, I think that, that's what makes that difference, yeah. All right, I think that's enough to be getting on with for now.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Casey.
So, we will, we do finalize this at the next meeting.
I do it at the next meeting.
And then, um, that way, uh, the town will prepare the warning, and probably, and I think, especially, maybe not, probably give it to you, say, just.
Okay.
Tentatively.
Yep, that sounds good, so that's, sorry, next meeting is the nineteen. Yep, that sounds good, so that's, sorry, next meeting is the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Okay, none of that, like twenty-third, okay.
So like the twenty-third, twenty-four, probably one of those days, especially in the morning, to do the warning.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you so much, Casey. Uh, any select board reports?
Yeah, report, there's no snow.
Still.
And it's a drag for everyone.
And there's none in the forecast.
Dead, this is the key word here.
Sugaring, people are making syrup, not me, but.
Yeah, no, people are. I kind of leaked out a little information, I think the Black Bridge is on, uh, almost done now.
Yeah.
I think it's this week, hopefully they'll have that wrapped up.
It is, I did a small reconnaissance mission down there over the weekend and it looks like it was very close to done.
Yeah, they were moving, they were demobilizing stuff today, so.
Oh, that's closer.
So the problem wasn't a problem.
Problem got strained out relatively quickly, yeah. But, uh, we are grooming, the snowmobile club is grooming between here and, uh, East Hardwick. Some people that wanna get out there.
What are you grooming?
Well, we were, we did. But.
Snow on the entrance.
I did see snowmobiles.
Yep.
Across the road right here.
Yep, no, but I saw a lot of people, my point is I saw a lot, a lot of peoples.
Yeah.
Um, so I think everyone's, it's gonna be a little bit of a learning curve for folks to all learn to get along. Leashes on your dogs gonna be a huge thing.
Ah.
Yeah.
Huge thing, I haven't seen a dog on a leash on the rail trail yet, which is. I'm a dog guy, but when you're out on public space with your dog, you need to have your dog on a leash, whether he behaves or not, they all behave until they bite somebody.
In the village as well.
They're also putting up their properties with dogs that might not like.
That's right, neighboring properties are not used to having people come to buy.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
There's a lot of backyard, they now have traffic that have never, ever, ever had traffic and then, and, and as long as they've lived there. Um, and horse people need to pick your poop up as well. I mean, this is a public trail and that means the public needs to take care of it, otherwise it will not exist.
And you know what they're putting mile markers on the trail?
Uh, there's been talk over the, over the time that they were, but I don't know where they are now with their sign package, I would say they must have some sort of mile marker, I don't know. I know they, they saved all the original mile markers that were still available when they redid it, but I don't know what the final sign package. I know they got enough stop signs.
I thought there, I thought there were mile markers on the parts they're finished.
On, on the old rail trail there was, the, the old railroad.
Yeah, well, they left everything that was there from, that was still there, I know.
Yeah, cause like a contact package by ten oh three, one hundred and one, our concerns were about it. And like I told her, that our only big concern was, we're, we're kinda crack ready cause we got enough, we can do whatever we needed. But ours was, there was no mile markers.
Right.
The local.
So it must be nine one one.
Each intersections have the street names on it.
Right.
But like I told her is that if they don't pay attention, they call in and they get hurt.
That's right.
And they say, we crossed this street, well, okay, they go on the east.
Right, right, so every intersection is nine one one identified through the vast trail system.
With GPS coordinate.
With GPS coordinates.
And a nine one one phone call instantly gets geowased.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
So you should get pretty good, pretty good information, but I don't know what's available in between those vast lines, I haven't looked into that. But I've seen a lot of these, you know, and it's, it's, it's great to see people out there.
Yeah, totally is, I agree.
I have this super tight old business.
Go ahead.
Um, I just, a couple of meetings ago, we were asking about when the HED reports, if we could receive the report that's given. I looked at the minutes, I did not see that report from the, I guess, uh,
The last one.
Roger mentioned that Mike gives the commissioners a report, it wasn't available online, so maybe at our next meeting, we could ask that ahead of time. So that way, I find it too much information to be able to properly ask questions, so it'd be really nice to have it in our packet.
Their information is very complex.
It would also be nice to like be another way for the public to see their report if possible, so.
Yeah, um, who's gonna, who's gonna follow up on that? Okay, I can, uh, everybody's going not it blue, I can, I can reach out before our next meeting and ask.
I'll do it.
You'll do it, okay, all right, all right, all right.
I got it, everyone's.
I'm getting tired, so it's hard to tell.
You're okay.
All right.
You have to do your stuff.
Okay, me too.
You earned your, your.
Six hundred, you're six hundred dollars.
Your, your.
Oh my gosh, all right, any other select board reports, new business, old business?
Are we still working on a, a old business, are we still working on a property, how, how detailed property sort of policies and protocol?
Sorry, say again.
We, meaning you guys.
I would need to, I, so I'm at the point where I would need to know what, what we're trying to accomplish for that, cause there's already rules about a certain property that.
Yeah.
Right, I'm just saying, because that came up when we were talking about the other property and, and my hope is that with our new downtown designation and with a potential, um, new housing being built, that we'll have some idea.
So, I, uh, I've not, I can't be the leadership up there, just because I'm not sure.
Totally fine, I'm just.
I'm not sure what to, I get, it seems to me that every question on real estate seems to be kind of a one-off. You know what I'm saying? The situations are always different, we seem to, every time we have a real estate situation, I general, maybe just general.
She's a checklist to be relaxed.
Like we're willing, like we are willing, but.
Or even just a policy on how we sell our public lands.
Yeah, I don't have a problem against it, I just don't know where to go with it.
I think we should, our policy would be selling for a dollar.
We don't sell everything, like electric, let that be a challenge.
Okay, just saying.
Be a company now.
So it doesn't, it gets in the way of progress.
Case by case, but I think that it's important to have some sort of guideline, I agree.
I mean, even if we just gather what those, what the statute is and what the rules are about it.
Yeah.
Well, that we have.
It's really just tie-in.
Right, but maybe put it together in a document so that it's transparent. Right, so it's transparent to someone, somebody asks us about something that.
Right, if you, if you look at it like, uh, well, you can't really look at it like.
But just a general document outlining the statutes and.
Sometimes VCT sometimes.
So that these don't, somebody asks us, we have it, yeah, here, this is where we stack.
VCT sometimes has that type of stuff where they take, like, they distill all the statute and they say, these are the salient points that you need to be aware of.
Yeah, I mean.
They may have that.
Well, we know we've got one coming up or two coming up, right off, so.
Um, and then I have a question about, um, so we talked about doing some sort of a job description page or a few pages where we tell people what the, all the different positions are so that they can potentially see what they would be signing on for before we go through and appoint all these people that some do and don't have, like, there isn't like an obvious person to appoint or there's maybe a person who isn't really doing it, but it's getting appointed anyway because they're the only person that said they would do it, even though they don't do it. So, um.
I have some of them, like I have to gather, right, have some of it and the plan was, I know.
Try to put in the annual report.
Well, and not only that, but before, like ideally sometime in the next week or so, we'd make like a report form post, like that says, here's the positions and I really, I've already posted like what was up for school board and things like that, but this would literally be like, what does a tree warden do? What is the store there, would bark it, like, they're all statute descriptions, um, but, and then DRB, planning commission, C P seats, um, trying, yes, we're, we are working on it.
Who's, what?
I am hoping by the tenth, over twelve, ten thousand, three, at least on that one.
Were you?
We're doing by nineteen, so.
I get, I get my stuff together, I get my, but, yeah, then get my stuff together.
And petitions, petitions are due five P M, January thirtieth.
Yeah, petitions for.
So for creations.
I can't beg, I can't beg to people only every three years, I can't afford to pay people off every year.
All right, so, um, anything else?
Uh, my baby.
Let's adjourn, thank you everyone.